Okay, we're going to call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present, we're going to proceed with the pledge. Captain Wagner, will you lead us, please? Thank you, Captain. Many of y'all are aware that we recently lost a member of the Castle Hills family, Officer Sergeant Ron Singleton, who had been with us for going on 10 years now. And I'd like to take a quick moment of silence so that we can just give a little bit of thought for him and his family as they're going through a very difficult time right now. Thank you all for that. Officer Singleton served this community and many of y'all know him and love him. So it's a grave loss for our city. And next, we're going to proceed with an invocation. We have Mr. Pinkston here with us.
And before I pray, just to say, just like all of the staff with the force here, we have been well-served by so many great people. You've had a great pension for hiring great people on our city staff, our first responders and Ryan and his staff. And you've made a lot of ground. Sergeant Singleton was exemplary above and beyond. And he was a bold, strong defender, but he had a tender heart. Even children loved this man. And you lost a good one, but you know, we're going to pray right now over that issue and over your leadership tonight. Thank you. So Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you that we can come tonight expecting you to to just come down and move upon this city. I want to thank you for living in just this beautiful little burg that is such an honor to be a part of a community with so much care, concern, and love and care for each other. And that was interrupted this week with the loss of Sergeant Singleton. And a man who really exemplified the values, the heart, the mission of this city, and exemplified what it means to be a public servant, a trusted man, and a man who's going to be missed. I just thank you that we are going to be able as a community to rise up and to support and care for and affirm those, I think of those on our force who are out just picking up where they left off, doing their duty one day at a time. But there's a hole in their life and we just lift them up and pray for peace, comfort, hope, and help for them. And of course Sergeant Singleton's family, we just reach out to you, God. I thank you that you are, you're there for them. But Father, you will use people as instruments. And I pray that many people across this community would rise and just reach out during this valley that they found them out. I thank you that there's peace in the midst of storm. There's protection against the uncertainty that comes and there's provision even for the force. One day you'll fill that position with another amazing person. And I pray that would be sooner than later because the city's going to miss him. Now, as this council just collects their thoughts and focuses on the business at hand, I pray you'd just give them a great mind for the work and wisdom for their decisions and goodness in their heart. And I thank you for the way that this council has led our city to a special place, a new day. And so many good things are happening in our city under their care and their wise decision-making and forward-thinking. So we just bless the name of Jesus in this place tonight. And again, I just thank you for being here together at a time to comfort and care about each other. Bless the Singleton family one more time in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkson. Okay, next up, we have citizen comments. I think we have a few. Thank you, Ms. Crawford, for helping us. Okay. Okay, we have no citizen comments on non-agenda items, so. You're on for number four. Okay, yes, I'm sorry. Okay, come on up.
I'm Denise Haley. I live at 220 Lund Blade Lane. And I want to, I can't add much to what Mr. Pinkston just said about Ron Singleton, but I will say that I think everybody in this room and probably everybody in this community has had an encounter with him during his career with us. And during those times, if it was for a moment, whatever it was for, you didn't feel like it was a police visit. It was a visit from a friend. It was someone who cared, someone who treated everyone with dignity and respect and kindness. And I had the opportunity to go on a ride along with him years ago when I was on the Crime Control and Prevention District. And he took me around to the stables. We went all over town and he showed me things about the city. And we talked and we visited and we had a wonderful time. And I'll treasure that. But I saw him work and do what he did. And from the person at the corner of Blanco who was panhandling and he got him off the street, he was kind and treated that person with respect. And as much as we're going to miss him, he has raised the bar for us to work a little harder, to be kinder and treat each other and our neighbors with that same dignity and respect. And he won't be forgotten. We can remember him and the way he lived. And I'm grateful that he was with us for the time that he was. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Okay, next up, we have the consent agenda. Do we have a motion, Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second, Mr. Joyce, do we have a discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. And next up, we have a public hearing discussion and possible action on a request from Angelique Bree for a special use permit at 2191 Northwest Military Highway Suite 2169 Castle Hills, Texas 78213. More particularly described as CB 577 AB Block 9, Lot 59, CHCB 208, City of Castle Hills, Texas, for an SUP to allow the operation of a specialty coffee shop, wine-serving, especially coffee shop serving wine and small plates. It is 6:40 and we're going to open the public hearing. If there's nobody to speak on the public hearing, we will close it.
I'm so sorry. Hi, hi, this is Angelique. I actually had to zoom in. I had to leave the city. I'm actually in another state for one of my other businesses, so I am here to discuss that.
Perfect. And we'll hear from you on the next agenda item.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:41 and proceed to item 6.2. Discussion and possible action ordinance number 2023-01-10 on a request for a special use permit from Angelique Bree at 2191 Northwest Military Highway Suite 2169, Castle Hills, Texas 78213, more particularly described as CB 5778B Block 9, Lot 59, CHCB 208, City of Castle Hills, Texas, for an SUP to allow for the operation of a specialty coffee shop serving wine and small plates. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this item came up in front of the zoning last Tuesday night for the request for the SUP by Angelique Britt. The zoning commission unanimously approved the SUP and recommended approval for city council tonight. And as aforementioned, Mrs. Britt is on Zoom and she can speak to her application and her business model of what she proposes with the SUP.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Ms. Britt?
Yes, absolutely. And I actually have a deck that I can share and walk through if that's okay?
Sure.
Share my screen? Okay, great. Awesome. Oh, I'm so sorry. It's actually disabled.
Okay, we are enabling you right now.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, let me know if you can see that.
Yes, ma'am. Perfect. Thank you.
Amazing. Okay, awesome. Great. And again, I'm so sorry I couldn't be there in person. I had to travel, but I definitely want to make sure I was here to try to speak to this. So my name is Angie. I am actually the owner of Clearlight Coffee Co., which is an already established coffee shop here in San Antonio, independently funded and started in 2021. And we have had a 300% year-over-year growth. And we actually have partnered with the City of San Antonio in 2022 and 2023 now. Some of the things that we like to do as our coffee shop is we love to support local causes, which we hope we can bring into Castle Hills. We've supported different churches, Blossom Center for Children. We've been listed as one of the top 24 things to do in all of the city by this San Antonio magazine. We hosted the Global Distinguished Gentlemen Riders Club, which is a club focusing on events, mental health awareness, and also San Antonio businesswomen. We have an in-house marketing company as well, hoping to target the right demographic for our business model. Now, that's just a little bit about us, but really where we're going is what we're trying to focus on right now. So we do expect continued growth across the US and in, of course, San Antonio and now to Castle Hills. We are evolving our business model to include small plates and now specialty wines. But I want to make it very clear, we are not going to be a bar by any means at our core. And as we've already established historically, we are a specialty coffee shop. Now with a small introduction of some specialty wines, we'll have very select few options on hand to make sure that we're not ever evolving into a bar model. That's not anything that we want to stand by. Cool. And so really why we're requesting the special use permit is since we're kind of straddling the line of not being a restaurant because we will not have eight full platters as TABC requires for restaurants. And we are also straddling the line of not being a bar because if at any point in any quarter our sales go over 61% alcohol, we would actually be in violation of our certificate of occupancy and be a misclassification of our business model. So as a small business owner, that would be detrimental and we never planned to be a bar. So to avoid that conflict and to be preventative, we're requesting the special use permit. And then how do we, how do we hope that we can help to benefit Castle Hills? So just as we've already done in the area of San Antonio, we're hoping that with our generated revenue, we can help to improve roads, the community, partner with amazing different organizations that will be in the area once we get to know them, provide another option for amazing coffee. And now a really cool wine spot where we think that will have a really great wine crowd. We love partnering again with different communities and local, and just supporting the local community. So that's something that we're really hoping can help to benefit Castle Hills, which is an already amazing establishment. And then who do we anticipate enjoying Clearlight? So as I mentioned, we actually have an in-house marketing company. And with that, we're able to really narrow down who we're trying to target to ensure that we're meeting the right people and people that will respect the brand. We believe that that audience already exists in Castle Hills, people again who are going to respect the community and what we're trying to introduce while never turning into a bar model. So our marketing firm is able to really narrow down by zip code, demographic, income, interest base, behavior base, and people that are actually going to really enjoy what we're bringing to the table. And then logistically, I know that this is a really important part of the puzzle here, right? How are we going to make sure that we're not tampering or having any sort of issues with any businesses nearby us since we are in a shopping center there? We actually, as a business, have eight dedicated parking spaces with an overflow of over 30 at a time. On average, we've monitored it hour to hour. We have been able to identify that there's 25 to 30 different spaces that are open at any one given time. And our busiest times, which would be Saturday and Sunday, the lot is actually empty. So we don't anticipate any sort of parking issues. And then to kind of not beat a dead horse here, but what really makes us not a bar or restaurant again is we're not providing liquors. We're providing very small, select specialty wines. At our core, we are a coffee shop. We're trademarked incorporated. And alcohol will never be the core of our business model. Specialty coffee is. And again, we're not a restaurant because we're not going to be offering any sort of eight full-course meals, just small plates. And so I appreciate you guys hearing me out today on why we're requesting the use of the special use category.
Thank you, Ms. Britt.
Of course. Thank you.
Council, do we have any comments, Ms. Danes?
I have a question. It says until 10:00 PM. Or is that your hours, your business hours or what?
Yes, ma'am. We are hoping that we're able to be closing by between nine or 10 or so. We don't want to stay open really late. We're not looking to have late hours. We feel like ideally for our customer base, nine or 10 would be the best time.
Okay, and are you open in the mornings because of your coffee business? You're open early?
Yes, ma'am. We should be opening. Since we haven't opened yet, about a month or so, we plan to open either between six or seven. Our current model and location is at seven, so we're hoping to stay online.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Danes. Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor and Council, I'd move approval ordinance number 2023-01-10, special use permit from Angelique Britt, as noted in the agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. May, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Congratulations, Ms. Britt. We look forward to having a cup of coffee with you.
Yes, I thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good night. Bye.
Okay, next up, we have a public hearing on an application submitted by Mark Makovsky for the Antonian College Preparatory High School, CB 5005A Block 8, Lot 1, 6425 West Avenue, Castle Hills, Texas, for the proposed construction of a new indoor activity center and tree removal for trees existing in the proposed footprint of the new facility. It is 6:48 and we're going to open the public hearing. I see that we have somebody signed up, Ms. Geringer. You can speak now or on the next one, whichever way you want to. You can speak for this agenda item or you can also speak on the next one, whichever way you want.
I would actually like to speak after the presentation because I know that, well, I believe that based on the Architectural Control Committee's review and approval, subject to some modifications, I'd like to hear what Antonian has to propose.
Okay. So with that being said, we will close the public hearing at 6:49 and proceed to item 6.4. Discussion and possible action on a application submitted by Mark Makovsky for the Antonian College Preparatory High School, CB 5005A Block 8, Lot 1, 6425 West Avenue, Castle Hills, Texas, for the proposed construction of a new indoor activity center and tree removal for trees existing in the proposed footprint of the new facility. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this item was heard by the Architecture Review Committee last Wednesday night. They unanimously approved. However, they did have some restrictions. I believe I've itemized those in your agenda item summary. Mr. Mark Makovsky is here on behalf of Antonian, who can discuss, provide the presentation. And then I believe there's been a discussion of already incorporating the recommendations by the ARC with buffering and backing up to Fox Hall Cove as well.
Thank you, Ms. Rappley. Mr. Akovsky?
Mayor, Council members, thank you for allowing me some time. I'm going to ask that we look at the presentation that we submitted last Wednesday to the ARC, primarily the site plan of the buildings. You can kind of get some orientation of it's, we were here a year ago-ish and got permission down on the bottom of the hill for this same building. And part of this presentation was moving it up to the hill so it's adjacent to the school. Some of those decisions were pointed out by the school last meeting. And the primary purpose of that or some of the driving force of that really was Rob Elementary. And even the Archdiocese, Archdiocese school-wise is looking at school safety, students, movement on campus of quick response in terms of if there was an active activity on the project that needs fire and police very quickly. This is adjacent to the existing school. Students stay in the chain of that area that can be locked down, secured. And the students weren't working from the top of the hill to the bottom of the hill for use in that building. So that was some of the driving force for the moving in the building itself. Once we did bring it on top of the parking lot is kind of where you'll see here on a site plan here in a minute. I've been here several times before for Antonian and I'm very aware of and very sensitive to the same conversation we've had with the neighborhood before in terms of views, in terms of traffic, in terms of some of these elements. So I think we had a very good dialogue last. A second here. A good discussion last time about some of their concerns and that's how those got incorporated into the motion, I think, that ARC made. On your screen here, the top left-hand corner where the red dotted line is, that's where the building was approved prior. From that location, you now see the big red box where it's on top of the parking lot. A couple of things when we did, we did move this building and I think they're helpful knowing that we're coming closer to the subdivision itself in Fox Hall. That building is about 4,000 square feet smaller on the top than it was on the bottom. We took some things out of that building and again incorporate that into some renovations inside the building to accommodate some showers for the girls. It also did a couple of things, I think, even intentional or unintentional, but I think it was the right result. And that is the parking lot where the red space went, the new building footprint. There's about 125 cars on that parking lot that will now be moved down to where the old location was, which takes some of that out of the parking lot in terms of congestion to some degree. And also does us a good thing because the football fields down there, the tennis courts are down there, the softball field's kind of down there. And so people are always kind of parking at the top, walking to the bottom. We've now given them a chance to park at the bottom, stay at the bottom, so to speak. And if you're familiar with Antonian, the driveway towards Fox Hall on the right is the entry into the campus. And the driveway on the far south side of the building is the exiting of that campus has been even when I was going to school there many years ago. So a lot of that traffic's down there, it's kind of stay down there, if you want to call it that. But I did get some of the parking out of there and relocate that. The other thing that we did was right now that parking lot is connected to Fox Hall as an asphalt surface. There's actually gates there that are closed and locked. But discussion with the school, different administration, in this proposal, we're going to take the asphalt out. We don't want any implications that we can use exit Fox Hall. That's gone forever. The gates don't mean much anymore because there's no way to transition from the parking lot to Fox Hall if that's a green belt. So we thought that was a good thing to do. And then we did talk in our presentation, ARC in the packet, about lining some of Fox Hall with more of a tree boulevard type effect. There are some nice trees that are planted there now that will obviously stain that green belt. And then we were talking to the neighbors about adding more in strategic locations to give them some buffering from the side, the side of the building. Some of that screening in terms of along that parkway, I'll say. And that's the discussion we had during the meeting. And that's what some of these add-ons were to the motion was put some trees in, work with the neighbors to kind of, to make that go much better. We did talk about the fact that there's no exterior lighting on that side of the building, the new building. So there's no light pollution from this building to the neighborhood. We were sensitive to that as well. And again, so I think we've had some good dialogue during the meeting. And I think Mark Pat pitch, who was the director of development at Antonian, also had, I think, some more discussions after the meeting. I've shared my business card, my cell phone number with them as well. We're neighbors here too. We live in, you know, as part of Castle Hills as well. So whatever we can do to accommodate them, we kind of mentioned. I think Mr. Mittelman actually is the one that talked about two-inch trees and the placement of trees. But we'll work that out with the neighborhood and the neighbors and be on the same page with them. So I'd be happy to answer any of the questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. Council, do we have any questions? Mr. Isbrand?
So in talking with some of the residents who have had interaction with Antonian, just want to make sure I understand, at this point, you have not identified a quantity or density of additional trees that would be along Fox Hall, correct?
That's correct.
But you have agreed that there would be consensus with the community on that and it would take place.
Yes.
Okay.
And we spoke earlier, just to be totally transparent and clear, you know, we can do it in several ways. We can plug in an agreeable allowance for landscaping, if you want to keep it generic from the very beginning, a landscape budget of $100,000. I'm not sure what that number's going to be, and then work closely with them. We discussed this with Ms. Schmidt before. Instead of putting the trees here, he said, would you mind putting them further down here? Because I live at the baseball field and where are you going to put them across? There's already trees at Fox Hall across. That gives them some buffer. I need some further down. And so we talked about, well, we'll get with you when we're ready to plant a tree someplace and say, here, here, or here. So I think that dialogue and that conversation can continue in terms of, you know, trying to accomplish what he's trying to accomplish. He was very grateful and I appreciate that. One of his other concerns was right now where the billing is at, you can pull your vehicle up. Those are parking spaces. And some of the issue, which I understand, I don't go to games any longer, unfortunately. But he said they tailgate there, so that's all their tents, their music, their cars. And his view is that direction. And I made it, I guess jokingly told him, I said, well, the good news is there's a building there. They can't park there any longer. The, we've blocked the view from the parking lot to the baseball field where they want to watch the game. They'll have to move on to the baseball field bleachers someplace else just themselves, obviously not their vehicles. And so I think that was, again, one of those unforeseen solutions was the building just took care of their tailgating problem from the neighborhood.
And just one other question regarding the construction of the building. When you design and build something like this, given the sensitivities that the residents have, what kind of typical sound barriers are there associated with the construction of a building like this? Is there anything additional that's being considered? Or what accommodations taken place with the sensitivity to sound travel as it might affect the neighborhood?
There's a couple of things that I do have. The rendering is kind of, the first top render is kind of the view you'd see from West Avenue. The bottom view really is the site elevation you would see from Fox Hall and kind of neighborhood. And a couple of things, even this illustrates that. Number one is on the wall facing the neighborhood, there is no openings. There's no windows. There's nothing that transfers more sound than normal through them, light through them because there's things happening on the interior. So that's kind of a blank wall to have that allowed. Two things are kind of in our favor in terms of the gymnasium use. Number one is the billing code, energy conservation. They consider the billing envelope thermally from the walls to the roof, to the roof, to the walls. So that whole containment has a thermal equation we have to solve to keep the temperature regulated both sides. And so the density of just a thermal insulation also acts as some of that density for the sound piece of it. Also gymnasiums, even to be in one, you have to do some stuff with acoustics in that building because if you can imagine a hard floor, hard this, a hard that, and noise, you couldn't stand the noise in the gymnasium. So some of these sound setting, deadening boards, some of these materials that we use in those buildings is to keep that sound to an energetic level, but certainly a level that you can stand to be in a space. So I hope that answered your questions in terms of that sound travel.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Makovsky, just to clarify, I think what I heard and just to make sure I heard correctly, Antonian is amenable to putting bigger trees, planting bigger trees to provide, I guess, more insulation, I guess, privacy for the residents right now as opposed to planting smaller trees that they're going to have to wait for. Is that correct?
A two-inch tree, a three-inch tree, you know, we've talked a little bit about the meeting. Maybe it's discussion about the type of tree, you know, some trees grow faster than other trees. The beauty, I think, somehow, a little bit of a live oak tree. And I know there's oak will cause issues in various areas, especially Castle Hills as well. But things about the oak tree that's nice about them to some degree is the fact they pretty much have leaves full-time. When they lose leaves, they replenish them. If you were to something that's faster growing, sometimes the leaves fall off in the wintertime. So it blocks the view and what we're trying to do in the summertime, but it doesn't block the view kind of in the wintertime. So that's why I think if we were to establish a budget number, a category landscape, whatever you want to call this budget number, and then sit down with the neighborhood and say, okay, is this the placement? Is this the type? One of the things about it, and I think Mr. Mittelman kind of mentioned the two-inch also as a caliper of a tree. But certainly the smaller the caliper, the best chance of it being transplanted, surviving and growing versus a six-inch tree, for instance. And if we have some kind of budget, how they want to spend that money or direct us to spend that? Do they want more shrubs and some trees? They want a grass berm instead of some trees with trees and berms? Those are all design elements that I think that we can work closely with them to achieve what they're trying to achieve. And two-inch, three-inch, four-inch, it's all, you know, again, if it's a budget item, the fewer, the smaller the trees, the more you can buy, the larger the trees, the less you can buy, but there's more coverage. But I think that's, I'm open to that discussion with the neighborhood.
Perfect. And the last question is what's the elevation of the building on that side facing Fox Hall?
If you look at the bottom elevation, the ridge line of the building, and if you look at most of the elevations, one thing we talked about ARC also is we're trying to take a building that has to be of certain size because of regulations of basketball and volleyball in terms of floor-to-ceiling clearances for ball travel. So that dictates kind of a 37-foot So that dictates kind of a thirty-seven foot, I think, is the ridge line from that standpoint. But what we've done in the building, if you look at the elevations and and the top one kind of shows, we've taken the high roof at the center of the building, and as it peeled away towards the neighborhood, we've lowered the roof lines with the shed roofs. So we're trying to get back to more to residential scale and not this high. We start here, we kind of tear down to here. We've introduced some some wall, some wall pieces uh, that are going to be out of brick, which kind of matched the school, which is more of a neighborhood residential material. It's a brick material versus a metal building, you know, for economic reasons. So we're trying to tear things down that address that residential scale when we go that direction. You can see on the front elevation, they kind of tear down a little bit in terms of scale on that side. The backside, which faces the ball field, is just a big, you know, straight high kind of wall. If you can look to the left of the top picture, that scales down where the entry is. One of the things we want to do in this building when we, this building gets built, because one of the other concerns that we've heard, let me see if I can go backwards on this, was where the gymnasium's at now, does this have a pointer? Whoops, that didn't work. That wasn't good. With the gymnasiums now, when the students come out of the gym, there's no place to gather, there's no place to stay and stand and wait except the parking lot. And if you look in the new presentation, the red is the new gym, the blue is going to be a pedestrian court. And then the 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 original gym at school is kind of in the cream color. So there is a, there is a place between the buildings that the students can gather after, before games that also gives them some vehicular protection is which is some of the design element. But it also keeps them kind of in their campus, surrounding their buildings, and not manning through the parking lot, so to speak. So we've introduced that element too, for not only their safety, but I think it works pretty well.
Perfect, thank you. Counsel, uh, Mr. Joyce.
I just have one question, perhaps for Mr. Schnall or maybe Mr. Rapley, and is there a need to formalize the agreement that Mr. Murkowski has with with our neighbor? In terms of the trees, how many shrubs, bushes, trees, how many, how big, all of that, is there a need to formalize that to to make sure it happens?
It's always a good idea to get it in writing, but the the A R C um, made its recommendation, that's in the agenda summary Mr. Rapley put in the packet, recommending that the council approve the new site and the removal of the trees contingent upon the applicant providing a vegetation buffer zone behind the private residential lots on Fox Hall Cove, abutting the Antonian property. And so the city would make the grant with that condition, with that contingency. And if that contingency was not satisfied, I think the city would issue a stop work order. And uh, the folks at Antonian would need to come back. And and if the city received complaints from citizens, whether on Fox Hall Cove or Fox Hall Lane, um, about this um, uh, activity, the city would send its code enforcement officer out. And if there wasn't evidence of compliance with the contingency, again, a stop work order could be issued.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schnell, or I'm sorry, Mr. Murkowski. Uh, assuming that the trees would likely not be in the construction zone, would there be anything that would preclude you all from putting that before construction starts?
We could.
That way residents are getting the plants to start growing as soon as possible and they're protected from uh, the mess of construction as well.
Yeah, they're actually in that green belt that exists now, so it's just continuation of that green belt, so we can remove the asphalt, you know, immediately, or, you know, the first phase, the phase one of this project is move the asphalt connection pieces from the parking lot to Fox Hall. The second or one A, that's one, then one B could be work with the neighborhood to develop that green belt, whatever that looks like in terms of design and and implement those, because you're right, it it's not in the construction zone, won't any, the new thing to impede any construction activities. So that could certainly be done, giving them a probably a year head start on on growing and establishing, and they'd be more than happy to make that the first phase.
Perfect, thank you.
That's a good suggestion.
Thank you, sir. And do we have any other questions, counsel, Mr. Paul?
If we proceed with approval based on the contingencies that Mr. Schnall pointed out, then I'm going to assume that if we approve it, then it's going to have to go back to A R C to monitor and make sure that the contingency in fact fit with what is agreed upon, because that's not our job here, to my knowledge, as far as what it's going to look like, what goes where, things of that nature. Would they go back to our A R C then if we approve it with the contingencies? But the contingencies from here are not specific per se, are they?
Not necessarily, Mr. Paul, I mean, from, I don't think it would have to go back to A R C. They basically asked that a essentially a buffering vegetation plan was put together by Mr. Markowski and Antonian. They didn't say that it needed to come back for their review. I think um, whatever's agreed upon by Mr. Murkowski, uh, the school and the neighbors incorporating their input and thoughts on it. Um, that could be something that's reviewed during plan review between Mr. Zamarone and I to make sure it's complete.
Okay.
Or suffice to uh, the neighbors, and then again, I know Antonian has a certain budget to work with, but uh, try to make sure that all parties are 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 in agreement.
I just didn't want an approval at twenty, thirty thousand feet, and we're still dealing, we need to deal with it down here at five thousand feet to make sure that it all fits into the picture, that's all. Thank you.
And Mr. Paul, I would agree with Mr. Rapley, this does not go back to the Architectural Review Committee. Um, it would be handled by city staff, I think he pointed out that it could be done during the plan review process. Um, and as well as monitoring during inspections and other matters during construction. But the council does have the option, if you wish to exercise it, to defer action tonight and ask um, the the school and its architect to find firm up and finalize plans with the members of the community. Mayor, we did had a citizen who wanted to speak on this item, might be appropriate to now hear from her, she may have a view about this issue as well.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Schnell. Uh, before we get there, counsel, do we have any more questions? Okay, I thank you, Mr. Murkowski.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Garringer. If you could say your name and address, please, you have three minutes.
Uh, hi, Gay Garringer, one ten Fox Hall Cove. Council and and Mr. Mayor, I am a a proud resident of Castle Hills for thirty years. We built our house in nineteen ninety-three, and in May of this year, it'll be thirty years. And I remember um, when I was a a brand-new resident, I used to think, wow, these people who come to council, because I used to come to a lot of the council meetings, and they talk about being a resident of twenty years or thirty years. I hope I'm there one day, and I don't necessarily like being thirty years older, but I'm glad I'm here uh, saying that I've been a resident for thirty years. Um, I back up to the baseball field um, at Antonian. So this greatly impacts me, I travel Fox Hall Lane to get to my home daily. Um, as does um, as do my two neighbors who are on the second row with me as well. Um, I think Mr. Schnell, Schnell mentioned uh, the correct way of proceeding tonight, in my view, because I've done a lot of work with residential, uh, with residences and and neighborhood associations in my in my profession. And the way that I always thought it worked better is to meet with the residents first, who are going to be greatly impacted, and then try to get as much consensus as you can. Sometimes you can't reach full agreement, but you can make a lot of progress. And then when we present to council, we're a lot farther along than giving uh, council this fifty-thousand-foot view, but there are a lot of contingencies down at the bottom that haven't been fleshed out yet. So I would recommend and and appreciate uh, a tabling of this matter so that the residents who are greatly affected can meet with Mr. Murkowski and anybody else from Antonian. I do not want to give up on the fact that that the building should be relocated to the to the back of of the existing structures as it was before. Uh, this new location has just been presented to the citizens as of January fourth. That was the first time that it was it was publicly presented. Unfortunately, I was out of the out of the state and could not attend that meeting. But there are a number of concerns that I have that I don't think are necessarily addressed tonight because I would rather address them with Antonian and then try to make some progress on our own. But just to to bring it, to bring to the forefront some of the issues, um, the hundred and twenty-five parking spaces are significant parking spaces. And many, many years ago, when I was a much younger resident here, Antonian brought the um, the proposal to the rat, to the council actually, to expand greatly the number of parking spaces because they were running out of space on the other side of the of the campus, they needed it. And they wanted to use the lot only for parking. And I specifically remember being very concerned about that because it it definitely impinges on our neighborhood and and the community that we have right off West Avenue. But it was only for parking, and there was going to be a lot of landscaping. Well, there was a lot of parking, and there was a little bit of landscaping, and that landscaping died very shortly thereafter. So now we have a berm, and we have a couple of trees that were already there, and that's all we've got. And so I I bring to the table some significant history of Antonian's effort to expand. And so I'd like to be able to visit with them before I visit with you on that. Um, but I I am very concerned about the the size of this building and the the close proximity to Fox Hall Lane and what it does to our entire community. So when the, when us as a neighborhood, we as a neighborhood agreed, and we did, we reached agreement and consensus on allowing Antonian to expand their parking lot. But it was solely for a parking lot, not a parking lot for ten or twelve years, and then we're going to put a huge building that's going to further erode the neighborhood that we have. So I I beseech you, counsel and and Mr. Mayor, to table this and let us visit with Antoni and see if we can reach some agenda uh, or some consensus on at least some of the items, so that we bring it to you with a little bit more agreement and a little bit more I, um, a little bit more time so that the neighborhood can absorb what they're trying to do, can see these renderings. We did not see a back rendering, the ones that we would look at from our back porch or our side uh, side view. Um, so there's a lot that that is um, just not yet known, that I think we can, we can uh, make some headway if we are allowed to visit with Antonian um, and not under such a short timeframe. I'm done now, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garringer.
Mayor, Mayor, if you'd like, um, I believe Mr. Zamarone and I could facilitate a meeting with Antonian, Mr. Murkowski, and the residents here at City Hall between now and the next meeting. So we make sure we're all on the same page, we've incorporated their thoughts into the plan and bring it back to you at the February fourteenth meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Question, Mr. Esbrand.
You said that uh, that your first, or it was stated, the first opportunity to hear this was in early January, January fourth, I believe you said. Oh, that was, okay, that was, that was actually my question, so the first time um, was January fourth at Architectural?
That that was based upon receiving the application to be in front of A R C and then sending the letters and notification out to the res- residents who were impacted by, I think, two fifty or five hundred feet, something.
And how far in advance does that go out? Would you refresh my memory?
Uh, we typically get it out about fifteen or sixteen days ahead of the meeting.
So it would have been in the middle of the holidays too?
Um, probably, I think, something we, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't think it's unreasonable to ask. Um, and and I'll make it a motion that we postpone this item until the uh, next regularly scheduled meeting of City Council to allow the city staff to facilitate a meeting between the residents and the uh, and Antonian to work through these issues and bring them back to council.
Thank you, Mr. Esbrand, do we have a second? Second, I missed stains, we have any further discussion?
Mayor, it's the equivalent of a motion to table, there's no discussion.
Okay, my apologies, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, counsel. Uh, thank you all for being here, hopefully we can come to an amicable solution for everybody. Okay, next up, we have item six point five, discussion of possible action on a resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh one dash one zero, expressing official intent to reimburse with tax-exempt obligation proceeds, costs incurred to construct street improvements and drainage improvements in the city, Mr. Rapley.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we have Andrew Friedman here from Samco. As I mentioned last meeting, we were bringing forward this reimbursement for resolution in regards to the certificates of obligation being approved. Um, this is so we can start um, with the projects and then reimburse ourselves with the uh, C O's once they are issued, and that timeline is still working towards a ratings call hopefully next week, and then uh, bringing the intent uh, at the next meeting as well. Did I cover everything, Andrew?
Yes, the reimbursement resolution before you all is is simply, uh, think of it as a piece of paper in your file, should the IRS uh, ever come and randomly audit uh, one of the city's municipal bonds. And so by adopting this, you're allowed to expend money towards these projects in advance of receiving it, spending the money out of other lawfully available uh, money of the city, whether that's your general fund balance or otherwise, uh, to progress things. And then when we close on the certificates of obligation in mid-March, the first dollar uh, that you take in, you'd go back to repay whatever the city spent. If you don't spend anything and you never use the reimbursement resolution, all the better. Uh, it's just a piece of paper in the file, that's the action before you all this evening. Uh, as Mr. Rapley said, uh, we are on track to have a rating call with Standard and Poor's uh, next Thursday, and then uh, move into pricing the certificates of obligation February fourteenth uh, and bring that to your council meeting that evening uh, for your uh, approval and consideration and approval at that time. If rates are good and everything meets those expectations and you approve, we close mid-mid-March and the six million dollars be delivered to the city.
And Mayor, this is again just safeguarding because we've already taken action to move forward with the engineering on the the roadside for design.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley, Mr. May.
It's rare, I move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero one dash ten, as stated.
Thank you, Mr. May, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, I missed Joyce, do we have any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, counsel, thank you, Mr. Freeman for being here.
You all, we'll see you next time.
Okay, next up, uh, six point six, we have a presentation discussion and possible action on a request by Peggy Brimhall, president of Figured LLC on a potential development of the Orchard at Castle Hills, a multifamily residential project for up to two hundred and eighty-two rental units at the property at twenty-two sixty-one dash twenty-two sixty-three Northwest Military Highway, including a request for an economic development incentive, Mr. Rapley.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Um, this item is a request by Mrs. Brimhill, Peggy Brimhill, a president of Figured LLC in regards to a potential development at um, the north uh, north northwest military highway, right there at North Winston, um, the property there. And uh, she had approached me because there's a number of steps that would need to happen if this development would come to fruition down the road. Um, this is also going through zoning, through an S U P and so on. But mainly, um, Ms. Brimhill has an uh, economic development incentive tied to it, so um, I requested that she come in front of City Council to request uh, this economic development incentive um, before councils decide to move forward or grant it or uh, in any way moving forward with the project, since there is a request for an economic development incentive. Thus how we've put it on the agenda for your review, uh, conferred with Mr. Schnall on how we styled it. And um, Ms. Brimhill is here to give you an overview of the project, and I believe some data. You have that up there on the dais as well for you, let me go ahead and get that.
Thank you. Um, good evening, thank you for having me tonight. My condolences to you and the city and the residents, I'm sure it's uh, not easy to lose an important person of your community. Uh, I'm here today to present my project. Um, I am what you would consider the sponsor of this project, but behind me, there is a large team of professionals who are working to put this together, both uh, under Figured as well as uh, future partners of Figured and consultants to Figured. So uh, let's begin, I will start by uh, describing the project a little bit so we can understand uh, the vision. And after that, I will talk about certain elements that we aim to incorporate into our project, mainly sustainability and uh, elements of high-quality construction. And you, and uh, I will close by expressing to you how a uh, ten-year fifty percent tax uh, deduction uh, for the first ten years of operation would help us achieve our goal to make this a premier, sustainable, market-rate community within Castle Hills. Now.
Yep, and out of PowerPoint. Go with applied instead of.
Okay, we'll work together. Thank you very much. Uh, so as you know, Castle Hills was established in nineteen fifty-one, and this property at that time. And this property at that time was part of a peach orchard. So I have taken inspiration from that um, and integrated a small orchard of trees to line the. Street along Northwest Military. In order to bring back that feel of when Castle Hills was first incorporated. Okay, now you are looking at the site plan. Here you will see that we're at the northern, not the site plan, the area map, excuse me. Here you will see that we're in one of the northernmost points of Castle Hills. Um, across the street from the Boy Scouts of America uh, property as well as uh, the Mission City Church. And uh, Charter School. Uh, we are surrounded to the north and south, and I guess you could say to the left and right by retail and small businesses. Mainly a few premier restaurants and eateries uh, that would greatly benefit from having an additional two hundred and eighty-two households. In uh, walking distance. Um, if you uh, take a look at the dark orange uh, shading, that is the shading of the buildings themselves. In the center will be the parking lot, but let's leave it here for now. Um, the shading of the buildings i- is very uh, uh. Very much a part of our design because while we are surrounded by retail. Uh, and not other uh, multifamily residential, we still want to fit in uh, even though we're a different use. So what we're doing is we're making this U shape that is facing the Northwest Military, a U shape. Uh, type of footprint that on one side is set back from the street sixty feet. And then on the on the other side, anywhere from eighty-five to about a hundred feet, there's a, there's a recess in the center. So that means that as you drive either from the north or the south, you will still feel the same cadence. That you feel uh, today when this uh, project is complete. The only difference would be that this project is four stories. Uh, the parking deck is also four stories. We uh, want to provide this community with four hundred and sixty-seven parking spaces. Which will equal to a one point seven ratio. And I would love to talk about that some more if there are any questions. Uh, let's move forward to the site plan. So here you see how uh, both on the east and uh, how uh, facing west, the building is recessed. Um, that is our, the first version of our parking garage. But I I wanted to show you this one because we have some renderings of the most current design. We have already engaged a landscape architect that is helping us make that approach much better than you see here. The goal in the final design is not to have a green and gray division of lines like you see there. The goal is to blur it and make it seem and make it feel like a very safe vehicular and pedestrian front lawn. And you'll see the renderings in a bit. That uh, so, okay. A little bit more description about what these colors are on this site plan. The orange are the units. We have a U shape facing west and a U shape facing south. The U shape on the right side, which is facing south, is the recreational area where this, the resort style pool will be located. The U shape facing west uh, which is on the left side of your screen is, has a lavender colored bar. That is the amenities bar. On the ground floor, we will have a lobby, a mail station, uh, a coffee station. Uh, we will also have an in-house gym and uh, uh, that will service. And if you see there, and again, this is preliminary, right? We just now hired our landscape architect. The square at the bottom that shows an existing tree that we want to save. Uh, that one will uh, 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 be uh, corresponding to the fitness area. And we want to make an outdoor yoga fitness spot for our residents. And then the square north uh, above that uh, will correspond to the coffee area. And will have a sculptural playscape. So if you, and so not necessarily a red, blue, green swing set. It will be more of a uh, playscape with folders and things like that that children can be on. But can also be plea- and you know, pleasing in a relaxing way. All right, um, another, another amenity we want to offer our citizens or our residents. Uh, on the lower right side, you'll see a lot of uh, existing trees there that we want to save. Um, there we want to offer a space for a dog park and we want to encourage uh, ownership of pets. Uh, because that uh, highly elevates your mental he- health and well-being. And since we do aim for um, the exemplary, sustainable recognition. Uh, that is one of the com- components and I will talk about that more later. Uh, can we go to the next slide, please? Okay, so here is the current design that our our landscape architect helped us with in the, in the front lawn. As you see, it'll be an entry that is is more or less circular. It it's not grid-like. Um, and what it does is it sets the stage for the peach orchard that is set to grow in. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see what it will look like. Now, notice the the viewpoint. Uh, we uh, we tried bringing the viewpoint down to what it would look like in a vehicle as you drove by. And I have to admit, you couldn't see anything behind it. So what we did is we elevated it up maybe through, you know, I think maybe there you can imagine you're floating on the third story. Looking at the structure so that you more or less get a feeling for what the building looks like behind these trees. But when you drive by in your vehicle, you, unless you know where you're going and you see the sign, you really won't feel the impact of those four stories. Next slide, please. Okay, here's another example. This is the uh, wing, the U that's facing west that is most close to Northwest Military. This one is set back maybe sixty feet. Uh, if you go to the next slide, this is what it will look like with uh, the P- the peach orchard. And what we're using in the renderings are peach trees. Uh, we would love to, in the next few weeks, uh, meet up with uh, the garden club or any other type of community organization. That might be interested in partnering with us and making uh, a program for when harvest time occurs. I- if we, if we're unable to come up with a program, then of course we'll specify oak trees or something else that will look just as beautiful, but may not require the maintenance. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, so who's going to live here? Well, um, we uh, studied the demographics of the people who are currently in Castle Hills. And we found some very exciting uh, information. Sixteen percent of all Castle Hills residents are self-employed. Uh, many more overwhelmingly, uh, half are professionals. Seventy percent have uh, no children at home for one reason or another. More than half are married and thirty percent of the population is seventy years old or above. So we thought that perhaps we would uh, bring in some sort of harmonic counter to the pop and the, to the demographics and where they might be going. And and through that, we uh, decided that young professionals and young families who would want to arrive to Castle Hills. And uh, and perhaps establish a home uh, in one of the many wonderful mid-century uh, homes that you have here at some point. Might be something uh, that would be compelling. Now, we also uh, are aware that there is a sub second section of early retirees. Uh, we are uh, designing spaces that will appeal to uh, a demographic that is fifty-five to sixty-five as well. Uh, but uh, in terms of uh, where our, our, most of our marketing spending is. We are going to focus on uh, professionals who are coming in from other cities in Texas. Uh, or other neighborhoods in San Antonio or other states in the United States and want to establish themselves for the long term. Just like uh, the woman who uh, spoke uh, before me, you know, or she thought, you know, thirty years later, here she is and she was hoping to do that. We would like to provide that opportunity for at least two hundred and eighty-two households. Next slide, please. Okay, now I did mention market rate, right? This is a one hundred percent market rate community. We want it to be a premier destination. However, we do not want to be the most expensive destination. So what we are uh, uh, projecting is that we will come in in the middle fifty percent to tw- uh, top twenty-five percent. Of premier developments in San Antonio. So that puts us somewhere around the two dollar and twenty-six per square foot rent price. Uh, which means that uh, most of the people here will either be a uh, a double income household. Or a uh, very well-established professional uh, uh, household as well. Uh, next slide. These are the uh, communities that we have been researching and are using as precedence for our own project. You will see Magnolia Heights in Almo Heights, the La Contera Projects, uh, the seventy-six Broadway also in Almo Heights. Trove in South Town, other South Town projects like Legacy and uh, and South Town Flats. We're even looking into older neighborhoods such as Digna Witty Heights that are experiencing a type of renewal and. And a, a new uh, uh, flair uh, to understand what sort of tenant uh, would live in a place like that uh, at this time. The final one is, is another one which is in downtown uh, San Antonio. It's got this urban infill uh, location that is very similar to ours. And uh, it's also going through renewal. It's, it's um, you know, a bit south of the Pearl, not directly. Uh, I mean, it's about a ten-minute drive, which this location is a ten-minute drive from everything, as you all know. So um, that, that is a good comparable for us. Uh, next slide. Uh, so this is what the uh, north side, the north elevation will look like on Winston. We wanted to break down the massing and uh, so that it wouldn't feel so uh, big. And so the way we're doing that is we want to drop a green wall along the parking deck, which will be open, it's not enclosed. Uh, so these vines in the center will be able to have uh, breathing space and can thrive. Uh, next slide, please. This is what the peach trees will look like. Uh, in the end, we want to create a line along there so that the walk from the east to west buildings will be pleasurable. We're going to create many paths from the east to the west buildings, both out, outdoor, indoor, public and private. So um, they will not be separated whatsoever. Next slide. Okay, so this is me. Um, my name's Peggy and I have about twenty years of experience. I do urban infill. I uh, am in love with this site. I've always admired Castle Hills. I live in South Town myself. I love walkability, uh, design and a small, good community. So I think I can continue that feel here in Castle Hills. Um, I mentioned the word small. I have never done a project like this. My, the project of this size is fifty-five million. And the hi- the highest project in terms of amount that I've worked on as the lead developer is nine million. So what I will do is I will partner with a national firm and I'm currently in negotiations. Can we go to the next slide? Currently in negotiations with Sperry Capital. Uh, they are located in Dallas, in New York City, and they also have ties in the rest of the world. The uh, this group of gentlemen together have more than a hundred years of experience. And uh, for example, Sam Suzuki on the right has about forty and he does two to three. Fifty to eighty million dollar projects a year. So they have the track record. I have the vision and I also will keep that connection to the community. And I think together we can bring a very successful project that will improve uh, that parcel in itself. But also complement uh, those who are living here already. Uh, can we go to the next slide? Okay, so I mentioned sustainability. Next slide, please. Um, we want to be a part of the Home Innovation Research Labs N G B S Green uh, uh, standard. This is a standard that's similar to LEED if anyone's heard of that. But uh, it is applied to multifamily living. We want to make sure that these standards will uh, uh, evaluate us on how households live. Sharing, you know, a wall on each side, right? And make that pleasurable. Uh, can you go to the next slide, please? So from there, there are four levels, bronze, silver, gold and emerald. We will aim for emerald. We, in the next few slides, we've identified a few of the larger categories that we want to uh, incorporate into our project. But I will say now that uh, we have to hire a consultant from this group so that he can help us lay out the exact strategy. And make sure that we get up to six hundred and eleven points. Uh, next slide, please. All right, so interestingly enough, on selecting an infill site itself is very sustainable. Next slide. Please, uh, sorry, um, also create, bringing in alternative technologies. And there is an alternative technology that Sperry Capital is uh, bringing with them. And that is three D printed concrete. And I know it sounds kind of far-fetched in the future, but I want to tell you that actually this type of technology was available to uh, exist. Or no, and let me rephrase that, could have existed uh, twenty to thirty years ago. Because we had AutoCAD at that time, we had G code, which is what the machines use in order to talk to the AutoCAD per se. But what we didn't have is investment from uh, uh, entrepreneurs to pursue a technology like this. So it's, it's been dormant, you can say, for a very long time and it's been known that it would be good. And only in the past five to ten years has investment come to this type of technology and really made it effective. And uh, proven the concept. Now, I'm very excited about this three D print concrete because I think that it will emphasize the, the type of, of uh, professional or resident. Uh, citizen that. Uh, uh, per, you know, you may want to attract. And and that is someone who um, is, is forward-thinking and wants to be in a uh, high-quality structure. That uh, is streamlining a, an industry that has a lot of uh, barriers and is very costly right now. We all know anything that can, in construction or real estate is expensive. Because of the F, of all of the efforts it takes to build. So this will streamline uh, uh, the industry. We have the opportunity to be the first multifamily project in Texas. Uh, maybe this uh, the second in the United States. And depending on how fast we move along, we could be the first in the United States. So that's something interesting. I'm uh, we're, I'm working out the details. I am doing due diligence myself. I will say I have experience uh, working with G code and looking into these types of technologies. And when I host a, a town hall, uh, if, if you'll allow me to, uh, I'm happy to talk about it in much more detail. Um, next slide, please. So other, other aspects about the project is the density. Having two hundred and eighty-two communities together is a very sustainable way to live. Uh, next slide, please. We'll get lots of points for that one. Uh, also the unit floor areas, even though we have a lot of homes as, as, as you might, you know, think two hundred and eighty-two is a lot. Uh, we are making our layouts very generous compared to other apartment communities. Uh, most uh, studios are five hundred square feet, ours will be seven hundred and fifty. Uh, most three bedrooms are in the, well, those, those really range. Let me say the two bedrooms, most two bedrooms are in the seven fifty to eight fifty range. Ours will be seven hu- nine hundred and seventy-six. Next slide, please. Okay, um, you know, renewable energy such as solar cannot be ignored. Uh, that one is, is one that is well-established and one that we want to use. Next slide, please. As well as water catchment, we've uh, our civil engineer is already working on strategies and solutions for this. It seems because of the grade that we, that there is in uh, on the site, this will be fairly easy. Well, I mean, in, in comparison to uh, other difficult things about building, but the, it's, it's very possible. Uh, so I'm also very excited about the water catchment. Uh, next slide. And finally, and this one, this one is key. And finally, and this one, this one is key because the building that you have across the street is beautiful. I love it. It has really stood the test of time. It's high quality construction, design and materials. We want to be the same. We want to still look great in forty years. So a, a big part of our goal is that we specify forty year materials for the exterior and that we are able to take it a step up and, and get some stone or get some, three, three, I'm sorry, three pane windows or more energy efficient glass. We, we get to do the storefront that is low maintenance and will last and look good for a long time. The store, a storefront system is the glass. You can consider it a glass wall that you would put in the amenity center so that the amenity center can feel, feel like an inside outside space. And you can see the lawn as well as the recreational area from both sides. Next slide. Okay, the big question, economic impact. Next slide, please, thank you. All right, currently, the, that lot is generating one dollar and eighteen cents in taxes per capita. If it were a retail center like that to the north and south, it would be generating thirteen dollars and ninety-eight cents per capita. If you consider a fifty percent tax abatement for the first ten years only, this property would generate thirty-three dollars and one cent per capita. And we, there's currently, what was it, four thousand seven hundred citizens, nine hundred citizens, a little under five hundred. I mean, we would bring in six hundred, at least two to three per household. So that number fluctuates, which is why we're showing the per capita. But in essence, it would be thirty-three dollars and one cent. And after ten years, imagine what the, the cost of living would, you know, how that tax rate would increase due to other factors. And then double that because we would not be benefiting from this tax incentive. Next slide, please. Now, apart from that, here are the economic benefits. So I realize, you know, the city has to accommodate all these new households. And in order to do that, the city would, during construction, would probably have an output of six point six million. And then from there, on, on the benefit would be somewhere in the ninety-nine million state. However, the capture from that would be seven million. Let's go to the next slide because this one's got numbers and it's a little, you know, here is a graphic representation of what that previous chart was and it's a little easier to understand since I can't directly point at the chart. Okay, so benefits during construction in the short term employment, there will be that many people employed either onsite or offsite. And the revenues that that is going to bring in will total the, the chart that's on the right. So it's five point six million plus nine point five plus fifty-five point three. How much of that can Castle Hills capture? The total economic output or benefit will be eleven point three million per year based on the activity and the additional spending that is going on. This is the benefit during construction. Now, if we go to the next slide, the benefit during operation annually will be full time employment for about approximately eighty people. Four hundred and fifty-four of the other people would live in San Antonio. However, because Castle Hills has such a high self-employed culture, we're wanting to work with you in the short and long term to see how many of those people we can capture and have them stay in Castle Hills. And if they are sole proprietors, register their address in Castle Hills. I have a fun fact. Twenty-eight percent of all professionals are expected to be one hundred percent remote in the next five years. So there is an opportunity to capture that remote professional who works for a corporation in San Diego or, or in Wisconsin, you know, in, I don't know, Minneapolis. And there is also a, a potential to have that complement those who are already self-employed in the area. Okay, the, the chart on the right shows the percentage increase in two thousand and thirty-four, in the year twenty thirty-four, that this project would help generate. So we would help the population increase by twenty-six percent, which would bring in spending. And up to that point, the residents themselves, ongoing operation while they're living, will spend eleven point three million on the, the businesses that Castle Hills has to offer, like that coffee shop that we heard from earlier. So there is a short term gain and a long term gain. And we, we want to do this for you and we want to stay in Castle Hills and, and ensure that this proposition remains beneficial to both the residents and the city for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brimhall. Counsel, that we just got a lot thrown at us.
Yeah, sorry.
Do we have any initial questions?
Well, can I, can I say, this was quite, I, I'm sorry, I, I am very passionate about this project. I think it can be really great. I know I've said a lot. So what I would like to request is that the council consider this only today, no action, of course. And, and also allow me to host a series of town halls because I would like to connect with the citizens. And I would like everyone to understand directly how, how we are approaching this project. And most importantly, I would, I would love to receive feedback from the citizens so I can understand how to make it even better. And then once we're done with the town halls, then, you know, you possibly consider action.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Counsel, do we have any questions right now? Any feedback, any input? Ms. Danes, I see you queuing up.
I don't even, I'm not sure how to start. So I'm new to all this, obviously. So my question, I guess, is, I don't, I, well, first is a statement and then you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have an economic development like package that we are able to offer.
No, ma'am.
New development, okay. So then I guess this is more to the council than to you. But is that, I feel like that's something that maybe would be beneficial for us to work with from the council perspective.
We, we don't have an established tax abatement policy. I'll let Mr. Schnau elaborate on how we would do that if the council would like to move forward with something like that down the road. But right now, we don't have that capability as a city. Mr. Schnau.
This will be tax abatement one oh one. In order to do the kind of property tax abatement that Ms. Brimhall is requesting, the fifty percent for ten years, the city would first have to adopt a policy and guidelines for tax abatements, not just for Ms. Brimhall, but for anyone who would come and want one. We have to say upfront, before we, the council can act on it, you have to decide what are your parameters going to be. Some cities set parameters very similar to what she has requested, a maximum of fifty percent. Some cities do the maximum, the state law allows you to do a maximum of ten years. So she's asking for fifty percent for ten years. Some cities have, have adopted policies where the, the period is not ten years, but a little less, but the percentage is a little higher. So there's a lot of flexibility there that the council ought to look at and maybe do some modeling to figure out, you know, what the impact would be, both the short term impact and the long term impact. And I think Ms. Brimhall's alluded in some of her last slides to the potential impact of doing this, even though the tax revenue is deferred or delayed. There are other benefits that might be accomplished. But I think we need to look at that as part of the, of the guideline creation to determine whether or not it makes sense. Some cities also include in these guidelines a requirement that the project be at a certain dollar amount, that the investment by the proponent meets some minimal threshold. A ten million dollar threshold is not uncommon so that you're not dealing with very small things. And many of them also have a requirement that the project create jobs. So a lot of these are done for retail type operations rather than multifamily housing. That doesn't mean that it has to have that. I've done these agreements and these, these guidelines for, for, for cities where there was, I, the applicant either had to meet the, the dollar investment threshold, investment, dollar investment threshold, or the number of job threshold. Either one would satisfy that, that requirement. There is a procedure to be followed to establish these. It requires the city to give public notice through, public notice in the news, advertisement in the newspaper of a public hearing on this project. We have to give notice to the governing bodies, to the chair of the governing bodies of every other taxing jurisdiction that the property is subject to. So that would include the county, the hospital district, the college district, the river authority. And that may be all, oh, and the school district. And the city would also have to declare this property as being a property that's eligible for this economic development incentive. So the city council would have to separately from the process of the guidelines for a tax abatement, the city also has to make a determination on the record after a public hearing, after public notice is given that this property meets certain criteria to be eligible to benefit, that the property can receive the benefit. And that's a, a designation of this property as a property that can be, in, in which a property tax abatement can be granted. The process usually takes between sixty and a hundred and twenty days from start to finish to get staff to work through defining the area and for staff to do the kind of work that staff would ordinarily do to give to the council some parameters about what other comparable cities are doing and have done recently in regard to these guidelines. What's the dollar threshold? What's the, the job creation threshold? So that what Castle Hills does, it fits the norm, but takes into consideration that we're not the same as every other city. And, and so I don't think that's an overnight decision-making process. But to get started, the council would need to give direction to staff to begin that process of the investigation and the drafting of a resolution for the adoption of guidelines, which would include the guidelines themselves. That is as quick a summary as I can give. And be glad to answer some questions or prepare a memo if council wishes.
Thank you, Mr. Schnau. Mr. Paul.
Might as well jump in. You anticipate a fifty-five million dollar project?
Yes.
How much money do you expect a tax abatement will bring you over each year?
One point four million. Oh, each year, a hundred and forty-five thousand.
That is, so you're referring just to the Castle Hills taxes as opposed to school district and the whole thing?
Right.
And I'm not sure, can we even, that can they be separated? Castle Hills taxes by itself versus this school district and things?
School districts can't provide this incentive. So that's, that's, that's not part of it. And I, I, you know, using the information Mr. Ms. Brimhall just provided, you know, I concur that the, that the cost of the fifty percent tax abatement on a fifty-five million dollar project at, at the city's current tax rate is somewhere in the mid-six figures per year. She said, what was that number again, one forty-five, one forty-six? So I, I think that's probably very close to on target from the rough calculations I was working on this afternoon. It's only for ten years. And, and if, if the abatement is a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, then the city is going to be receiving a comparable amount because the tax abatement would only be fifty percent. Again, it's a, it's a new decision for the city. I'm not trying to promote it or demote it, just explain it.
Well, that's what I was getting down to. Basically, it's a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars because I was doing some numbers too, a year to City of Castle Hills. Now, my question is this, you've determined it's a market rate project. If it's a market rate project, then it should be able to stand on its own. And you shouldn't need any help from us onto an if situation when you're only talking a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars a year versus a fifty-five million dollar project. You gotta find a hundred and fifty-seven thousand in there. I don't see how this project, why we should even be involved in it. It's a, you've already identified it as a market rate. Well, market rate means it's capable, it's able, and you can build it and it'll take care of itself. So I don't see why you need our help. And that being said, unless there's something unusual that, that show, I, I don't see why we, we didn't even look at this, but that's just my opinion. I'm one of five.
May I respond to that?
Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate your opinion. It, it's very good feedback. There are two reasons why we are seeking a partnership like this with the city. One is to go above and beyond the standard multifamily construction. We have interviewed quite a few residents of Castle Hills already. And many of them are afraid that we will come and build something similar to, you know, some of the projects that exist to the east of Castle Hills that over the course of ten years have become dilapidated and run down because the specification of materials have been the minimum required by city code. We want to go above and beyond that. But we also want to balance that out by not pushing rent rates. We don't want to crunch the tenants and expect them to, to pay rates that you see in some of these market rate buildings like, like those in Alamo Heights and in La Contera. So really what it is, it's, it's a balance of a give and take. Can we, can we partner with you and offer a, a better market rate, a better place to live and a property and project that will look just as good today as it will in the next thirty or forty years?
Well, again, if, if the project is viable, you can do that without our help. Just go do it. If they have to do with less apartments in it, a smaller project on the lot, might be prettier, whatever the case may be, whatever you can do, whatever. But there's, I, I, when you do a tax abatement, that's generally the, we had another person come and presented some stuff to us. It kind of was similar, but it was entirely different in that the city would have had control on things. We don't have control, we don't want control of your project. Project stands on its own. It needs to stand on its own. You need to produce it the way it is. If you have to reduce from two eighty-two down to two hundred apartments, it may fly. I don't know because you got zoning, you got all the other different things that you have to jump through, ordinances that are already on our books. But again, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars looking for help for a month. If you're doing a fifty-five million dollar project and you need that money from us, I don't have confidence in your confidence or lack of confidence that this thing is viable enough. And I just don't think that it would be right to come here and ask us to participate in that. You do tax abatements primarily for one reason. And that is you drop a project into an area that is dilapidated, blighted, whatever the case, and that project will help. While we'll tell you that the corner of Lock Hill Selma and Northwest Military is not a project area, is not dilapidated. And, but again, that's just my thought.
Thank you.
Mr. May.
You mentioned the capital investors have not been lined up and concluded, is that correct?
No, we are in the process of writing the agreements. So we hope in the next thirty days, it will conclude.
In that preliminary discussion with the investors, did you, you don't have to tell me this, but I think it might be instructive. Did you talk about the possibility of? Did you talk about the possibility of the city not authorizing a tax abatement?
Yes.
And isn't it possible that the investors would be so taken by the project that they would go forward without a tax abatement?
Well, so it does put the project at risk in the sense that there is a, a required, a gain from the project for, for the investment group. If we don't make those hurdles, then being able to lock in low-risk funding as well as, and high attention, own, ownership and management be, begins to be at risk. So I, I, a, a third underlying approach here in requesting this is to minimize the risk, every risk we can think of that would, uh, create a shortcoming for the, for the project and for the community.
Probably should leave it right there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr., is Brandy look pensive? Are you ready or?
I, I guess there's, um, I, I, actually, I'm trying to think because I think both Mr. Paul and Mr. May have done an excellent job of getting ahead of questions or things that are in my mind too. And I, I guess I'd want to make a couple of observations perhaps. First of all, I, I would be very hesitant to encourage the council to move in the direction of establishing a policy on tax abatements based on a presentation that's come before us, rather than independently looking at what the value of that would be to this community and the type of business or development that we would want to come here. So that's, that's part number one to me. And then the second part of this is I would also be hesitant to move in this direction based on what, as of today, Ms. Brimhall, that you don't have the funding secured to begin this project. So what you would be doing is asking the city to go, if you pardon me for a second, as I jumped through a lot of hoops to open a door to an abatement, if we even wanted to consider that, with no assurance whatsoever of the stability of a quote partner that we would be dealing with and that. That gives me great pause on this. I feel like this proposal, I very much appreciate the time and the effort that you put into this and what you've brought forward to us. I in particular very much appreciate the energy efficiency, the landscaping, the aesthetics, all those types of things. And I think where, in an apartment complex, wherever it might be, I, I think there's a lot of value to that and I appreciate that. But what I'm hearing today does not make me feel that we are in a position to take any action. If for no other reason, then there's no assurance whatsoever that this would even go forward. Your project would go forward, yet we're, we, we would be asked to move on a policy decision regarding abatements. And I just think that's poor governance for a city. So that's, that's basically the observation you made was, likewise, as your experience is with projects that have been around nine million. This is estimated to be about 55 million. So again, I think it calls into play the assurances of the, the financial stability, the, the things of that nature that would give me pause on this.
Yes, I understand that and I agree with you completely. I am here today because I wanted to introduce the project. I am in a far along in, you can call it negotiations, but we're on the same page. We're in agreement. We're just ha- having the lawyers write out the, the contracts. So I cannot tell you it's 100% done because it, it, you know, the ink isn't wet as they, as they say. But given the timeline and, and our expectation of being done as a partnership in the next few weeks, we, we would like for you all to be aware of what we are thinking about and, and wanting to construct and also start making the citizens aware. You know, we, we, we want to be very transparent. And, and we also want to be very efficient. And that's why I'm, I'm introducing it today and, and not asking for an action, just asking for consideration.
And I very much appreciate your desire to be transparent. I think that's very important. We're engaging with the community, especially a community this small. So, so thank you for that. But again, I feel like there, I, to, to Mr. Paul's point, I just feel like there, there is no action, whether we were here now or soon to come. There is no action for us to take on this. There is, into the question that Mr. May asked, there is nothing that would preclude anybody from purchasing this land, from developing a $55 million proposal and building it. So that process could still move forward. But again, without any assurance of the financial stability of any investors, which at this point there really aren't any. And then you characterized at the beginning too, that you would be a sponsor of the project, which really leads me to, I'm not sure I understand what a, what a sponsor would be.
I, 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 a sponsor is an industry term and it means representative. So I'm here to represent it. And when the agreement with Sperry Capital is finalized, they will be here as well. I'm just here to start the, the, the conversation. And if, if we can host a town hall in the next two to three weeks, they, they will be here as, as well as our project architect, our economic advisor and our landscape architect.
So I, I, I guess where I'm netting out on this is I applaud you if you want to talk to the residents. I think it's a wonderful thing. I, by the same token, do not want to send any mixed signal or any unclear signal to the residents that we're moving forward on this, or this is very viable. And we're doing, doing all that. So there is nothing again that would preclude you from continuing to explore your financing. And if this is a very attractive opportunity for you without a tax abatement, to continue to pursue that too. Since we don't have a policy in place regarding tax abatement, since there's nothing that would allow, prevent you from continuing the conversation, but with a desire to make it clear to our community that this is a, a, someone putting a speculative piece out there and not something that is directed or encouraged by the council, I would in fact ask us to consider tonight whether we actually move a motion to cease discussion with Figured LLC at this time. And I'll make that as a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the table.
I'm not seconding the motion.
You are seconding?
I am not.
Okay, so do we have a second before we proceed with Mr. Joyce's comment? We have a second by Mr. Paul. Conversation, Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer maybe a, I agree with what the other councilmen have been saying. We do certainly have to be assured of economic stability over a long period of time. But having just gone through at least and getting a draft done of our comprehensive plan, one of the higher priorities in that plan has been economic development. And surprisingly, as we continue to talk to groups and citizens, the garden club, parks and projects and so forth, economic development, even within those seven or eight priorities identified, ranks high within them. So I think that it would behoove us, especially since not long ago we adopted it, we established an economic development committee and I think sent a signal that that is something that's important to us. I would think that whether or not we continue discussions with Figured, I do think it would make a lot of sense based on that, that we do ask Mr. Rapley and his team to begin adopting that policy and guidelines for incentives. It's something that the folks are interested in, in my opinion. When we talked about development with the survey that was done some time ago and even with our workshops, there was always the caution of responsible development. And so that's something surely we should seek. But it seems to me that we need to be ready. Whether or not this is the opportunity for Castle Hills remains to be seen. But I think we need to be ready, you know, when that opportunity comes. So it seems to be wise for us to move ahead and adopt and ask Mr. Rapley and his team to adopt the policy and guidelines for incentives. It may take a couple of months to figure that out. Our economic development committee is still in formation. Hopefully in another 30 days, we'll, we'll have people seated on it. But in any event, I, I respect what the gentlemen have said, but I think that we need to move ahead with that policy and guidelines. Thank you.
Gentlemen, may I ask a couple of questions real quick before y'all proceed to your second or third round? Ms. Brimhall, thank you for your presentation. One of the things that stood out to me that Mr. Isbrand mentioned was you said the biggest development that you've done before was nine million?
Yes.
How many units was that?
It was 22 large units.
22 large units and this one is proposing 2,282?
Yes.
So the, the disconnect there gives me a little bit of heartburn, honestly, off the bat. I understand that you have a national or international partner that you're considering partnering with. Have you ever worked with that partner before?
No, I have not. But we do have many people in our networks in common, including our alumni networks. And I have gotten to know him and I know a lot of people who know him. And this is Sam Suzuki as well as his two partners. They have an outstanding relationship. And so far in our process to become partners, they have been very great, generous, understanding and fair. So I am also going to be an investor in this project and one of the developers. And, and, and so having that balance, I, I feel comfortable that they will understand what it is to build five, $55 million worth of multifamily. And I will make sure that it remains a community that has integrity for the long term because I'm the person who lives in this area.
Sure, I understand that and I respect that. I guess what I'm seeing is there's just a, a big gap there. And to Mr. Paul's point, that it's $150,000 approximately over 10 years, 1.5 million. It's like 3% of the $55 million project, which seems like such a small amount for us to go through this entire process that's costing the taxpayers realistically because we have to pay for the services like the city attorney and we built in, you know, all the additional time that we spend with town halls and all that. So it seems like a lot for such a small percentage of the total development.
You, you're right. It seems like a lot. But what, what it allows is a commitment from the city. Let me, let me put it this way. It shows a few things. It shows that the city wants us to be here and will also help in servicing and maintaining it in the long term because it's one of the priorities of your community to, to welcome more households, right? So it, it sends an intangible message to the investors that makes them feel comfortable. It also allows us to upgrade some of the, the sustainable aspects and some of the amenities, like the approach, the curb, the, the part of the property that's owned by Tech Dot and not ours, which is significant. It's a lot of the frontage on Northwest Military. It, it, it allows to, it'll, it allows for the project to fund that and see that as a partner, as a partnership and, and not just us arriving, coming in and, and building and, and not caring about the community.
That's you. Thank you. Mr. Paul?
I just wanted to point out, unless I'm confused, the motion on the floor has no relevance to keep us from doing what Councilman Joyce suggested at another meeting. All we're saying is to cease conversations with the current situation, the current builder, that's all. But there's no reason why we can't proceed at the next council meeting or whatever for planning of action of what you recommended, which I think is, which, you know, don't have any questions of that. I'm sure it's probably needed so we can be prepared in the future. But right now, that's not part, unless I'm missing something of our motion on the floor.
Mr. Paul, that actually would have been my, my comment back to you. Mr. Joyce is, I think there's two separate issues here. I don't disagree with what you're saying at all. We have, I think unanimously adopted a motion previously to establish this economic development committee. I personally would like to have some members put on it before we start moving forward on some of these things because I think that's what your intention was in first bringing that forward and it would be a very healthy way to proceed forward with it. But establishing a policy is, is not what the motion was about, nor is it what the agenda item is about.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. May?
I, I think the word we're looking for, or the words are, they're not mutually exclusive and we can work on both fronts. I think you can read between the lines here. There's a hesitancy to make the council at this point a factor in tipping one way or, or the other. And other things have not been done, which I would call due diligence. And one of those, of course, is the investors. And I think it's probably inappropriate for me to discuss what I think you should be doing, but I think you know. What I would just say is that if you come back before this council in any capacity, consult with the master plan because this is something that's really been worked and reworked for years. And we have a vision and I personally believe in the vision. And I'm convinced that that property and others will attract the right investors and the right development. And this council will act at the appropriate time. But I don't think that we feel a, let me speak for myself. I don't feel a sense of urgency to act at this point.
Ms. Brimhall, so just for a little bit of background, this kind of, your presentation comes on the heels of another developer that was recently here proposing to develop a, for all intensive purposes, we'll say a similar style of project. That was not met with welcoming arms by our residents, specifically some of the residents that were most closely impacted by that potential development. I think what you're seeing up here is a, a little bit of, I'm trying to find hesitancy, thank you, Ms. Dan's hesitancy, based on what we experienced less than a year ago and us knowing what our residents are looking for and what is a priority and what isn't necessarily a priority. I would like to, to double click on the plan regarding economic development or economic incentives. One of the things I have brought up years ago now was potentially putting together economic developments. And Mr. Schnell, if I remember correctly, had indicated that that's typically something that somebody would bring forward and not necessarily something that we would put together to offer. And Mr. Schnell, if I'm off base or confusing things, please don't hesitate to correct me.
Well, it's done both ways. I mean, I've certainly had situations where a city for the first time adopted a, a set of guidelines and designated an area as an area redevelopment area eligible to receive the benefit of those kinds of incentives based upon a major employer coming to the city and saying, we will come if you help us. That's not much different from what Brimhall, Ms. Brimhall is saying. We will, we will do this project if you give us this incentive. Others have commented on various aspects of that. And, and some cities have done it in the other order. Some cities have done a, a tax abatement guideline without it having been presented, without first having been given information from a potential purchaser of land. They just, the city just decided to do it on its own. Mayor, in the way you suggested, which is that the city puts together its basket of, Mayor, in the way you suggested, which is that the city puts together its basket of potential economic development incentives and then markets the community using that basket of incentives to try to interest developers in coming to the community and making, you know, a, a major investment. And, and in the process, perhaps picking something out of that basket that they'd like to receive from the city in exchange. The, the, the most typical thing that's received is the property tax abatement. Because it's, it's the most commonplace one that I've seen, but I have done other kinds of economic in- incentives that, that do not involve a property tax abatement. But for a, a major retail project, we've done, I've done an agreement that involved the rebate of a portion of sales taxes. And I've also done broader, more, I'll guess for lack of a better word, more creative agreements, which are permitted under chapter three eighty of the local government code, which, which can, can run the gamut. One I remember doing involved a, a project where the, the city and the private property owner shared in the cost of a major road improvement that would serve not only the, the property owner's property, but also help the community. And so the city was able to get an X thousand or an X million dollar road project done. And, and it, it only had to pay part of it because the landowner was willing to contribute part of it to get that improvement to benefit the value going forward of its property. So there, there are lots of other possibilities. Several comments have been made about the Economic Development Committee that the council authorized, I think earlier this year, or sorry, last year. It's hard to remember. It's twenty twenty-three. And, and that's another vehicle to use to take the collective wisdom that's going to be on that committee in conjunction with the city's new, hopefully new adopted, newly soon to be adopted master plan to come up with that basket of, of incentives that the city council could then decide whether to move forward on having the documentation prepared. Remember that in, in the instance of a tax abatement, not only does the council have to decide what the economics are of the abatement agreement, the property has to meet a criteria under a specific section in chapter three twelve of the tax code. And for, for most, almost every piece of property in the city of Castle Hills, the one area in that section of chapter three twelve that might be applicable relates to jobs. It relates to the creation or retention of jobs directly or indirectly. All the other criteria are what either Mr. Isbrand or Mr. Paul said earlier. I think it was Mr. Paul who talked about typically these abatements are given in areas that have a history of distress, have, have become dilapidated, are in some ways substandard. We don't have property like this and certainly the property that Ms. Brimhall is describing at North Winston and Northwest Military doesn't fit in any of those dilapidated type of criteria. So we, we would probably need to be aware that we'd need to designate an area probably larger than just this one, what, five acre piece of property, more or less, as a larger zone and make sure that our guidelines for tax abatements included the requirement about creating jobs or maintaining jobs. It is, as I said earlier, it is not an overnight process. It, it is clearly a minimum of sixty and, and I think more, in, in most instances, more like a hundred and twenty days to get one of those things, you know, in a, at a point where the council would be ready. It would be ready for prime time before the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Do we have any further comments, Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that I, I understand all the comments that have been made. It makes a lot of sense. But just from the, from the selfish architectural perspective, I think it does make sense to continue talking to Ms. Brimhall for a couple of reasons. First of all, there's a sensitivity to our city that we have never seen or heard before, in my opinion, on a project like this. The idea of the Peachtree Orchard when it was first founded, the idea of building amenities into the project. And I, I just think that there's a sensitivity that has value. I also think that in real estate, there's this rule, retail follows rooftops. And we have, where Ms. Brimhall has talked about adding two hundred and eighty-two units here, two hundred and eighty-two rooftops, so to speak. And we'd have to evaluate the numbers to make sure that they make sense. But in my mind, there is no question that there would be a benefit to the city if this project were built. Understanding, understanding the, the hesitancy. And I think that would be a substantial benefit. And it also appears, if I'm understanding Ms. Brimhall's presentation correctly, that we're going to begin taking in more tax money from day one. If that project is bringing a six or seven thousand dollars a, a month or a year, whatever it is, at this point, once that thing is valued by mayor appraisal, we're going to, is it a hundred forty-five thousand dollars a year?
Yes, it goes from collecting a dollar nineteen cents per capita to thirty-three dollars, and I forgot what the cents were, but more than thirty-three dollars.
Okay, so, so the city's taxes, tax revenue increases immediately?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, anyway, for those three reasons, I, I would be in favor of continuing discussions with Ms. Brimhall, whatever schedule that might mean. Obviously, we have to establish our guidelines, but, and that's going to take time. But I, 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 I think this is something unique that we should keep talking to. Thank you.
May I say, so I understand it takes time, which is why I'm here to start. And we, we are a patient team who can work fast and we are open. We have kept abreast of the progress that you have been making with the master plan and how you wish to connect this avenue in a pedestrian and in a bicycle method. And we, we want to be a part of that. We, we want to be that tipping point that really makes it flourish in, in a way that having, in a way that is actual and not theoretical. And I understand that theoretically we have, it, it, you, you as a council would need to get these documents done first. That's the first step. So if, if you all have, i- if you all councilmen and women have a, a few weeks worth of patience, I would love to request a little bit of time so that you can meet Sperry Capital next month and, and you know, and, and continue the discussions. And, and also consider this as, as a side note, you know, why go through that effort of adopting a policy now? If, you know, if there's nothing going on. Well, there is something going on and it's, 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 it, it can be pretty big. So we're, we're hoping we can be a motivator and, and if anything.
Thank you, Ms. Brimhall. Counsel, do we have any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the table by Mr. Isbrand and a second by Mr. Paul to cease negotiation, negotiations. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, well, that doesn't give us a lot of clarity, but we'll, we'll move forward.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, next up, we have item six point seven, discussion of possible action ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh one dash ten dash A, calling a general election for the city of Castles, Texas to elect the mayor and two aldermen, making provisions for the conduct of the election, resolving other matters incident and related to such election and providing an effective date. Mr. Rapley, since Ms. Craig is not available.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is a, just to call the election for the May sixth election for two aldermen and mayor. And the timeline, I put a revised agenda item summary in front of you that indicated that the last, first day to file is January eighteenth and last day is February seventeenth. And again, we will be partnering with the county on this. And eventually, if this is approved through the ordinance, I can sign the joint agreement as well. And we budgeted about seven thousand for this potential election, which is a regular election.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero one dash ten A, as stated.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do you have a second? That's Mr. Isbrand. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Next up, we have announcements of mayor and councilmembers on items of community interest. Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor and council, I, I think probably like everyone, I've struggled to be able to come and say something about Ron Singleton tonight. And it's difficult to be able to say anything succinct because there's so many stories to tell about him and his service to our community. And it struck me though, that, and I'm sure each of us has our own individual story to tell. And it struck me that literally every single person I have talked to since this terrible news came our way has their own story to tell too, that everybody knew Ron Singleton, whether you had gotten pulled over by him and given a ticket and darn, wasn't he the nicest guy when he did it? Or whether you were standing out in your front yard watering the grass and he stopped by and always said hello. He was the epitome of what we would expect to be a community servant. And when I think about all these personal stories and how special they are to each person who has one, I just simply hope that they give us all comfort right now. This is very difficult for everybody and God bless Ron and God bless his family.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul?
Again, in reference to Ron, I mentioned this while I go to some people. Chief Davis, Wayne Davis hired him back about in two thousand thirteen and he immediately, soon thereafter, gave him a nickname and that was Officer Friendly. And it, it fit from day one and it stayed with him forever. He sorely, sorely will be missed.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. May?
I have a similar reflection. My last conversation with the sergeant was about three weeks ago. And he reminded me that he was watching me on my power walks in the morning. And he not only encouraged me, but he did something with action. Because when he would see me and he had the opportunity, he would commonly give a couple of honks. And with those two honks, I would stride a little bit better, lift my chin up a little bit better. I would do better. And I think this is the mark of a community. It's not just what we say. The encouraging things are important, but it's also the physical actions, the things we do. And he exemplifies that. And you're right, Councilman, about every single person that reflects on how they interacted. So many people on social media had told me it was the nicest ticket that they ever received. And so in his memory, I just want to share that.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Sincere condolences to Sergeant Singleton's family. Thank you all. Good luck to you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Danes?
As a, as a mother of school-aged children, I was always happy to see him and wave and sometimes pull up next to him and have a little chat when he hadn't, wasn't, when he wasn't pulling someone over for a ticket. Because I felt like that he was doing such a great service to our city by being that traffic officer on West Avenue and keeping the traffic slowing down during the school zones and everything. And I pulled up across from him, just, I think it was the week before last. And, and, or maybe it was the week, probably Christmas has me thrown off. I'm like Mr. Schnall on the whole. Is it twenty twenty-three already? Yeah, but I mean, right before Christmas, I pulled up next to him and we had a little two-minute chat. And, and almost every single time I passed him, we waved at each other. And I, I really am struggling with the fact that he will not be there anymore. And I'm, I'm very sorry and I'm very sad for his family and God bless them.
Thank you, Ms. Danes. I, I, I don't think that we can all say enough good things about Sergeant Singleton and the impact that he made in our community. I know that the family is trying to put together some memorial arrangements and given the impact that Sergeant Singleton had in the city of Castle Hills, we're hoping that if his memorial services are not in San Antonio, which is a possible consideration right now that the family is going through, that hopefully we'll be able to offer something for our police officers here and the residents. So we'll, we'll be sure to share that. I, I think it comes to a certain point where we spend more time with our colleagues than sometimes we do at home. And sometimes that strengthens the relationship and it makes them feel like family. And I don't know if Mr. Paul knows this, but Mr. Sergeant Singleton said that he had such unique relationship with Mr. Paul that he often referred to him as his white grandfather. And just a small idea of, you know, the kind of relationships that we develop and how much he meant to the city of Castle Hills and how much we valued him. On a positive note, I would like to extend a happy birthday to my colleague, Mr. May. I won't say how many years, but spry. On that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
We have a second. Second, Mr. Joyce, all in favor? Okay, meeting is adjourned.